Are you ready? The video's running.
Okay. My pleasure, ladies and gentlemen. To the Republic of the States, and to the Republic of the which has stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, holy and dear.
The Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of April 12th, 2016. The Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve their scheduled minutes for the meeting of April 15th, 2016.
He got them separately because he wasn't here for the meeting of 15th.
Oh, okay. So, I'm reading the one for April 12th.
I'll move. I will. The 12th. I'll make that motion.
Okay. You have the Commissioner there?
Aye.
Commissioner's office. So, the minutes of the 15th, April 15th, requesting the board approve and execute the minutes for the meeting of April 15th.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner there?
Aye.
Commissioner's there?
Aye.
Commissioner's there?
I'm staying.
Commissioner's office will report on financials from April 22nd, 2016, Resolution 16 dash 049, as approved by the county administrator pursuant to the motion, approved January 5th, 2016, to authorize the county administrator to execute, in the case of lack of form commissioners and for if sessions canceled on regular financial day or on a day when financials need to be approved, required approvals for county financials on behalf of board during the year 2016 as authorized by the ORC 305.0.
I approved appropriation transfer of juvenile court, moving money from special projects into Medicare and opers. So, that was an appropriation transfer of $575. Then, there was a supplemental appropriation to the juvenile court special projects payroll fund of $8,276.21 and $1,347.29 for the opers or payroll.
Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the Resolution 16 oh five oh, itemizing financials. We can't do that yet.
Today's financials include cash transfers out of the general fund for 2016 funding for the engineers' office in accordance with ORC 315.11, and also first quarter 2016 interest transfers. There's a purchase order for Junction Auto Sales for the purchase of a 2015 GMC Savannah box truck for the Department of Job and Family Services in the amount $35,718.50. Travel request for the Department of Water Resources. Payment to Corso for the 2016-17 program cost for the program auto and liability insurance in the amount of $332,611. Payments to Junction Auto Sales for the purchase of two GMC Sierra 3500 Foreman trucks for the Engineers Highway Department total in $66,014. Payment to Lakeland Management, and that's for the final payment on the Engineers Office Edition project in the amount of $11,928. And a payment to Johnson Controls for Phase Two member replacement and upgrade project for the McFarland wastewater treatment plant in the amount of $1,153,655.
Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution 16 dash oh five oh, itemizing the financials for the meeting of April 26th, 2016.
Well, you can, yeah, sure, you can bring it up.
The payment to the engineers?
Yeah, I just wanted to, for the record.
Yes.
The engineers' payment that was $48,000.
Right. The scheduled payment regarding the MOU for office expenses for that department for this year was $122,700, to think. And so, this payment of $48,000 is reduced by the $74,000 that they're repaying for the office addition project. So, that's how that will be paid.
The agreement that we have, the MOU that the engineers and the commissioners have for repayment for their office facility or office building, over 15 years, am I right on the number? I mean, I think it's a 15-year deal.
And then, they're paying back, what, 78 point?
77.8%. And that's, that reflects that lower number.
Right. So, we just reduced our transfer to them by that payment. The other payment for the salt storage structure, they'll make directly to us, and that's about $25,000, $26,000.
Yeah.
And that's also for 15 years.
But I just thought it would be good for the record to state that they have started paying for that building, and that's how they're paying for it, and that was all by agreement that was actually, I believe, ironed out before I got here.
Mm-hmm. It was put in play, it was started before you got here.
Right.
Very, very good, very good process.
And I think it's, yeah, I think it, I agree completely with all of that, but the clock finally started.
Can we reread or make the motion?
I, I make the motion.
Second.
All right, Commissioner there?
Aye.
Commissioner's there?
Thank you.
Commissioner. Commissioner's office will report on the items approved April 22nd, 2016, by the county administrator, authorized by Resolution 16 dash oh oh five under the direction and supervision of the county commissioners. It was approved January 11th, 2016, pursuant to ORC 305.030.
This was simply a Ohio motor fuel tax refund claim for transit buses for the period of January 1, 2016 through March 31st, 2016, for the amount of $2,861.73.
I think this is six, right? Morning Craig.
Good morning.
Morning.
What a great name. What I'm talking about, what a great name.
Let's start with lawyer jokes next.
Oh, yeah, we're both lawyers.
That's right.
That's dangerous.
For them, not for us.
We can talk ourselves on anything.
Good morning, commissioners. Good morning. We are here today to ask you to approve Resolution 16 oh five one. What this would do would designate the Geogu County Department of Job and Family Services as the lead agency for the purposes of the Comprehensive Case Management and Employment Program, which was a program that was passed in legislation, I think, last year's budget bill, by the administration. And what this will do is, this program is really a continuation and expansion of the current youth programming that Geogu County Department of Job and Family Services has been doing with workforce funds. That annual budget is around $100,000, $120,000 a year. This expansion will bring in excess of an additional $300,000 to the county using state discretionary temporary assistance for needy family funding. So, it basically allows Geogu County Department of Job and Family Services as providers to expand the services to the new population.
Yeah, basically, what comprehensive case management is, is it designates a population of 16 to 24. The governor's designation is identify this population as a population that they're really trying to lift out of poverty and really tackle as many problems as we can within that population with these funds, providing them with, you know, case managers, identifying different resources in the community, and really, it's mandating us to have, you know, really significant case management with these individuals, and work with them, and do follow-up services, and again, identify more resources in us to have contracts with different providers in the community, so when they're done with us that they are as successful as they can be, you know. And that's sort of this population that the state has identified. And, you know, it's been a lot of, you know, work for us to figure out, and there've been some pilot programs going through the state, I think Tuscaloosa and Stark County have been, you know, working with us. And so, it's, what the state has identified is one of the biggest programs that they've put out in a long time to really try and work with this identified population, so they become less dependent on these resources going forward.
What did you say, age population again?
16 to 24.
So, we're going to take 16-year-olds who are in poverty. When I was 16, I was in poverty, because, you know, I had a minimum wage job. Explain that to me, how we're targeting 16-year-olds to get them out of poverty when they're probably living at home. I don't understand this.
The focus is, is they would have to meet either one of two eligibility standards, which are the Workforce Innovation and Opportunity Act standards, which take into consideration the entire family's income and/or the temporary assistance for needy family income standards, which are also taken into consideration the entire family's income. So, it does not, just look at the 16-year-old. The exception would be is if a 16-year-old would be emancipated, not on, you know, living and have family or familial support, was out on their own, then we could consider their own independent income.
And it's similar eligibility standards as to our summer youth employment program that we've been doing for the past three years.
Three years.
Yeah, I'm sorry, did that answer your question, or?
It answered my question. We will have a conversation following this meeting.
Yeah, I mean, this is a state mandated program, and if we, it's one of those things where if we don't participate, we get punished for it, so, as you can imagine.
Or they may come forward and, like, their own agency, their own person to administer the. There's a word for that. I'm not going to use that word right now.
Probably a good idea.
Okay.
And just so you know, as far as the designation is concerned, you know, as you can understand, several other counties have, you know, we're a quad, JFS is a quad combined agency. Many other counties have different designations. The commissioners have the choice of either the workforce or, you know, JFS, and so, we're both. So, if anybody was going to oversee the program, and I would trust it, would be Craig.
Which one?
Both.
No, I appreciate that.
Yeah, we are working on this program. I would like to know.
Absolutely.
Okay.
The Northeast Ohio Consortium Council of Governments, NACOD, is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution 16 oh five one, honoring the immediate designation of the Geogu County Job and Family Services as the lead agency of the Comprehensive Case Management and Employment Program set forth within the Ohio law in Ohio Administrative Code, Section 5101, 14 dash 1 dash 07.
I'll make that motion.
Commissioner there?
Aye.
Commissioner's there?
Aye.
Thank you very much, Governor. Give the rest of the morning.
Good morning, Adam. Good morning, Adam. Do you want to explain the process, or do you want me to explain the process, and how we, how? Sure.
The Department on Aging is, in numbers, six, seven, eight, and nine, are all very similar in combined. Department of Aging has made some changes to a job description. We had a rather long title for one of our positions, Home Healthcare Specialist slash Social, shortening that to Social Worker, which is a little bit more of a standardized term. So, some of this is the revised job description as well as renaming the title. We already have one person in that position, that's Selana Costa, so it'd be renaming as well as giving her the new job description, as well as posting a position, the position, and this would be an additional position that was already approved as part of the budgeting process at the end of 2015. So, it was on the organizational chart, just not yet posted, so the Department of Aging wanted to get that posted, so we can get a new person in.
You are, all right.
Seven, eight, nine?
Seven, eight, nine, and then 10. Yeah, you gave us six, seven, eight, nine, and the number hasn't changed. But it's four items, right?
Okay. The Department on Aging is requesting the board approve the revised job title and description for the position of Home Healthcare Specialist Social, number 1022, to Social Worker, number 1022, to be effective April 26th, 2016. The Department on Aging is requesting the board approve the revised organizational charge to include the position of Social Worker, number 1022, total of two positions, to be effective April 26th, 2016. The Department on Aging is requesting the board approve the revised job title and description for Selana Costa, or Home Healthcare, from Home Healthcare Specialist, that's why you're changing, Home Healthcare Specialist Social, 1022, to Social Worker, 1022, to be effective April 26th, 2016. And the Department on Aging is requesting the board grant permission to advertise for the position of Social Worker, 1022. This position will remain until filled.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner there?
Aye.
Commissioner's there?
Aye. Do we have a resolution to honor Frank Purts? If I may tell the board a little bit about Frank?
Yes, Frank Purts is one of our transportation drivers. He's been full-time with the Department of Aging for a few years, at least worked for Georgia Transit for some time before then. Frank's retiring into this month, well, a few days to take now. He's one of our out-of-county medical transportation drivers, so he picks up Geogu County seniors, takes them to out-of-county medical appointments, and brings them home. Frank's quite good at what he does, so we appreciate his service, and certainly appreciate if we'd be able to honor him as well as we send him off for retirement.
Pardon? You can, and I'll read the resolution, so.
Thank you.
Oops. We'll read the resolution, then we're, why don't you go ahead and read the item on the page, I don't read the resolution, so.
The Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution 16 dash 057, honoring Frank Purts for his service to Geogu County's, Geogu seniors in Geogu County.
And here's the resolution. Whereas Mr. Purts has served the residents of Geogu County since 1976, working as a part-time police officer with the Sheridan Police Department for seven years, along with being a full-time master machinist at Stanley Air Tools, retiring in 2003, and working miscellaneous jobs including Heather Hill Extended Campus, Geogu Transit, and then his current position as an out-of-county medical transportation driver for the Geogu County Department on Aging, helping to keep Geogu seniors safe. And whereas throughout the years, Mr. Purts has worked with seniors diligently to help keep them safe where they live, and also by transporting them to where they need to be in and out of Geogu County. And whereas in his spare time, he enjoys being outdoors and being, going to his grandkids' school activities, and now, therefore, be it resolved that the Geogu County Board of Commissioners salute, congratulate, and thank Frank Purts for his 12 years of public service. Further, be it resolved that this resolution become part of the permanent record of the Geogu County Board of Commissioners. I'll make that motion.
Mr. there, when are you presenting that to him?
I believe it's Friday.
Okay. I'll make sure I get that to you by Friday.
I. Yes.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
All right. You'll have this mastered by the time Christie comes back. No. Is Linda here?
She's here.
Linda's got a great story to tell.
Good morning, commissioners.
Morning.
I'm actually pretty excited about this contract that we're bringing before you today because it's going to represent about a 50% decrease in the cost of making film scans for the county without a decrease in quality. The reason that we're able to do that is that this company makes the film wider and stacks on three high instead of a simplex approach. We looked at the quality of the film even before Allison left. We had them run some test rolls for us. Quality meets the ANSI standards, but because they're grouping it on the film the way they are, we're able to do 11,000 images per roll instead of three. So, it's a pretty significant savings, no loss of quality. And again, these are for records that we are keeping digitally. Access to them is going to be digital. This is the, oh my God, the world came to an end, copy.
You can explain to the benefit of people who haven't heard, and thousands of YouTube viewers, the permanent retention requirements, the I-readable requirement.
Yes. A lot of people feel that microfilm is an outdated technology, but the reality is, it is an I-readable, unchangeable version of the record, and that's what we want. As you know, as well as anybody, digital technology evolves so quickly. You know, I have wrote a book on a big floppy disk, I can't access that now. You know, we don't know where technology is headed, but we need to have something that is accessible to everybody in perpetuity, and that's what we're doing with these records. This is for our permanent retention records. When this film is made, it's going to go to Iron Mountain. Once again, access to it will be digital to the department, so we feel like this is a win for everybody.
This replaces the hard copy?
The paper will be disposed.
The paper is then shredded or rounded up, or whatever we do with the paper?
Yes.
And frees up space to store? Right. I mean, you can, you can store boxes and boxes of paper records on a few rolls of?
You can do three boxes to one roll, Phil. That's huge.
Which is a lot smaller and lighter.
Now, we're going to do three boxes to one roll. This went through the microfilm board. Everybody looked at the film, talked to the vendor, talked to the technician. We're very happy about being able to do this for everybody at a significant reduction in cost without any loss of quality.
Thank you. Thank you.
The Archives and Records Center is requesting the board approve and execute the service contract agreement with Cameron Trick Graphic Systems Incorporated to create microfilm from record scans within the department for a two-year period in the amount of $68.96 per roll.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner there?
Aye.
Commissioner's there?
Aye.
Thank you.
Thank you. Hello, Andy.
Our case, cold place, the young surveyor should. Good morning. On the agenda today, we have cuts road easements for the bridge we're constructing. It's the final step to approve them. One is for the outlet structure, the Albright's, the amount of $215, and the Knights at the inlet structure for $210. Any questions regarding why we need them? It's to extend the actual physical structure outside the right-of-way so we can eliminate guardrail, which ends up being savings in the future, to install, repair, future guardrails, and we can just cut grass for the bridge.
All right. I was down there last week.
Yes.
And I noticed that you removed a number of trees.
Correct.
On both sides of the road.
Correct.
I guess it'd be the inside of the curve.
That, that's the structure, that's the bridge itself.
Yeah, and, and so, then you're going to take, are you straightening the bridge out or just replacing the bridge as is and then filling in on the sides? Is that how that's?
The existing structure, it's a double C, a horrid metal pipe.
Okay.
Two pipes that are basically together, that makes it span more than 10 feet, essentially the bridge. The new structure will be a concrete box structure, replacing the single opening.
Yeah, rectangle box.
Rectangle box. And we're going to extend the inlet and outlet to the point where we're going to build. Right now, there should be guardrail up. It doesn't meet certain standards for safety. The trees actually probably act as a safety.
Yeah, they'd stop you.
They'd stop you. To reinstall guardrail, it's a cost, and it's a recurring cost in the future for people hit it. Way post, they rot. It's expensive to replace. The structure should be good for 7,500 years, no problem, concrete box. In that time, how many times have we replaced guardrail? Two, three, four times, could be. By adding a section of box, eight feet, 10 feet out, on each side of the inlet and outlet, which put it outside the existing right-of-way, two, three feet, we can eliminate the guardrail. It's all right, Jay. And so, upfront cost for long-term savings, that's the purpose. Being that we have a structure outside the right-of-way, we have to have easement, and the Knights and Albright's, we approached and explained to them, they were agreeable to it, and have signed for the amounts that we determine based on fair market value. Twenty, or thirty-five, but forty, the sizes are, no, in perpetuity, for the record, so it carries with the properties, this deed, on the deed that the county will be able to go in, maintain, replace, when we're all dead and gone.
Makes sense to me. That's the reason I asked, is one of the residents asked me, and I said, I, I'll find out, so that's why.
Township, township has been great. We have an easement gained for the township culvert that's just at the south, and it's the same purpose. It's a situation that is drop-off, that we need to extend, and township's been great working with CBI to get CBI to come in, actually, and remove some of those trees as part of the overhead utilities that are there. So, township's been really helpful and great to work with in this project. So, first is the bridge and the culverts, and the design for the road is coming next year. Township would improve that, and that process right now. Next thing on the agenda, which kind of sets up that, so these two easements are for the bridge project itself.
Does that incorporate all three of these motions, then?
Just two, the first two.
Okay, the other one for the cuts road in Hampden is a different one.
Yeah, the 13 is the actual reestablishment plan. I'll give an explanation about what that is.
Okay. Okay, you can read 13 and 14.
County Engineers Office is requesting the board accept and execute the easement for highway purposes between the Geogu County Board of Commissioners and Jody D. Albright and Timothy Albright, parcel number 15 dash 052300, for the cuts road in Hampden Township in the amount of $215. The Commissioner's office is requesting the board accept and execute the easement for highway purposes between the Geogu County Board of Commissioners and Robert A. Knight, Jr., and Elizabeth Josephine Knight, parcel number 15 dash 006900, for the cuts road in Hampden Township, in the amount of $210.
I'll make those motions.
Second.
Commissioner there?
Aye.
Commissioner's there?
Aye.
Commissioner's there?
Aye.
At this point, the public hearing is at 9:30. Do we stop or do we mark finishes, or what do you want to do?
Well, we're proud. The public hearing that I'm seeing here is at 9:35. Well, there's no, no. One at 9:30 on the 17th. I mean, I guess it's not, you know, if anybody that's here for that is, is going to be here. It's not like we're doing it early, and somebody might not have a chance to come, so I would think you could let him finish.
Is it finished?
Yeah. Go ahead.
Next is the, the Officer's Office requesting the board accept and approve the reestablishment plan for cuts road, Township Road 72, Section A in Hampden Township. This is also related to the bridge replacement project, drainage project, and the upcoming road project in Hampden Township. That's in front of you here on these lines. Now, what this is, in order to build something, we're building it, so, the Commissioner's Office is going out, this road, all the evidence, possibly found. Something that's kind of new for us, the Commissioner's Office, and it's something that we've discussed at length internally, Joe especially. And the statement that's on the cover sheet, I'll go ahead and read it, and you can answer any questions you like, and just. Something that's kind of new for us, Engineers Office, and it's something that we've discussed at length internally, Joe especially. And the statement that's on the cover sheet, I'll go ahead and read it, and you can answer any questions you like, and just so you know where that comes from, this isn't a new thing. I have a journal here from Bokeye, Commissioners Journal, Journal's page 18 from September 2030, 1887, that...
Was absent, did it?
I was. Well, a lot of the things that we do as surveyors is retracement and follow the original. In this journal entry, we came across this language in here that we basically didn't plagiarize and we modified it a little bit to suit our days and standards. But I'd like to read that for you aloud, and it may clarify or cause more questions to be read if I may.
Okay.
Jog County Engineer respects the reports that the above referenced county road, that being cuts road, TR 72, Section A, be reestablished upon the line that has been resurveyed and relocated as herein reported for the following reasons. It is believed to be the true center line of said road as it has, as it had previously laid out, been previously laid out. By performing a thorough and careful investigation of this matter, with considerable time invested in obtaining evidence as to the true location of this line, final determination of its location is a viewable. Final determination shown herein that the center line of said road is believed to be the one true center line of said road, as it was previously laid out, and upon the same line, or at least as near the same as is possible for human skill to retrace evidence at the present time, and being fully satisfied that sufficient evidence in our possession justifies and warrants the making of this assertion. The final determination of the center line of said road being located and reported as the center line of said road may or may not correspond to the current traveled roadway. It has also been determined that public convenience requires that such county road shall be reestablished and open with a minimum width which shall be the same number of feet in width that it was originally established to or altered to by state statute, whichever is greater. This reestablishment will not reduce or extinguish any apparent easements that have been acquired to alter the road right-of-way with where necessary. This reestablishment shall serve to define the center line of the public roadway and will supersede all previous road records from a dimensional aspect. The intention of this reestablishment is to maintain the integrity of the previous road records while removing any deficiencies, ambiguities, or errors of measurement which may have existed in previous records, all of which is respectfully submitted. There's a lot of language there.
So what is the ultimate outcome of this? If we didn't shift the center line of the road, we're just kind of redefining it or establishing the current center line, basically?
This reestablishes the center line of the road for everyone here. It's a fact.
Did it move?
It may have. What we found is some things are not absolutely retracable. Some of the evidence is long lost. The evidence that we do have goes back about 90 years. Originally, this road was 1820, I think, when it was...
The reason for asking the question is if it was substantial, I'm assuming it's not, if it was substantial, that means that the road would move, which means you've got to take some property in order to correct the center line of the road, or you redefine the center line of the road to be where it currently is. So which is, is it, do we have a problem or this, we're just reestablishing?
We're reestablishing the easement over the property. Properties are, properties are where they are. This is the center line of the road. Basically, when the road was dedicated, it was dedicated as an easement. It wasn't a fee take, like a matter of subdivision. So what this does is basically there's, we found a lot of ambiguities, and we find a lot of ambiguities in the road and the records of history, which don't always agree. Private survey to private survey, even some of our original records and field books that were maintained by the prior county engineers and the county surveyor. What this does is assemble it to our best of our knowledge and belief and document it from here on forward for everybody to follow. And they can follow every decision we've made, all the records.
So the real impact is we're just cleaning up the records.
Cleaning up records.
We're not really changing anything. The road's center line's not changing. Homeowners are not being impacted.
No, it defines the center line of the road for the homeowners themselves, basically. It cleans up a mess.
County Engineers Office is requesting the board accept and approve the reestablishment plat for cuts road, Township Road dash 0072, Section A, located in Hampden Township.
Make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Riddick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sprecher?
Aye.
For your time. Thank you. Do you need these back or...
They'll come back. If you have a copy of them, I will need those back. So if you don't need to take them, you know?
We need to sign.
I gotta be signed and everything, so yes.
So we need to go into this...
There's only one signature, right, Andy?
Sign it.
Only one signature.
Yes.
He wants to take that now and then we're done.
You don't need to talk. It's fine.
Yeah, I have smudged it, so I'm grateful for that question. Have a great day.
Dave, we're going to hold you up while we do the hearings.
I know.
Take 30 seconds. Take 30 seconds?
Yeah.
I don't know. Really, that's about what it'll take. Okay. Come on, quickly.
Thank you. I do appreciate it.
He showed staff over there, so it's kind of hard to...
Yes, yes. I've already seen this since I was at the meeting.
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
Quick one. Just to give this note, we did approve this at our last meeting. This is Canyon Manor, A Color, County Mayor, President. NEP and Associates prepared the drawing and location, south side of Flintlock Ridge, just east of Lookout Drive in Canyon Lake. And Creekview Trail is the private road, right-of-way that we're looking at, and it's already been approved and built some years ago. So what I have in front of you now is just a consolidation of two sublots into one. Sub lot 26 and 27 would be consolidated to create sub lot 26A. It would be about three quarters of an acre or 32,810 square feet, a little under 200 feet of frontage on Creekview Trail. And I've got sign off from County Engineers Office, water resources, salt on water, Bane rezoning, planning commission. So your last.
Good meeting.
Planning Commission is requesting the board approve and execute the reflat of Canyon Manor subdivision, sub lots 26 and 27 in Bane Bridge Township.
Make the motion.
Second.
Commissioner Riddick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sprecher?
Aye.
Thank you. Very hard to pick.
Planning Commission is requesting the board approve and execute the reflat of Canyon Manor subdivision, sub lots 26 and 27 in Bane Bridge Township.
Make the motion.
Commissioner Riddick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sprecher?
Aye.
Thank you.
Hey, real quick, let me ask you a question here.
I know with this, this whole, you know, USGS water thing, you know, as far as, I know
that we haven't been presented anything as far as, you know, to vote yes, to vote no, to go ahead, to do this, to not do this, which normally for the last three years you've been presenting that for us. Where do we set it down right now? You know, we're evaluating options and stuff, but, you know, just kind of been patient waiting to see what we're doing, we're going to put the final lid on this thing and be done, you know? So...
Yeah. I believe there's supposed to be a meeting of staff, and Commissioner Clayfield, USGS will have a session here as well for that meeting, to discuss the options, you know? And I'd like to think we can wind it up.
Okay.
We did not procure the agreement back in the fall, so we weren't clear.
You know, with option there with that one.
Yeah. We just weren't clear then.
So let me, so let me ask you this. If I, if I look at, took an idea of like, oh, here. So if I look at a, if I look at a calendar here of our next meetings, we've got, there's going to be a meeting here, I believe, on...
May 10th.
May 10th will be our next meeting. So can, is it fair to say that at that point in time, we'll have a decision made to be able to put this thing to rest?
Let me weigh in, because I'm probably as much in tune with this as I'm talking to all the various departments, plus the USGS also. Meeting the 5th, that is all the key subject matter experts. So, and by the way, Dave, all the key subject matter experts have all agreed that the right thing to do is to come together into this meeting and discuss some of the issues. There are some issues. Even the USGS, Martha Jagukey, after we've had these conversations, is in agreement that there are things we ought to be talking about. For example, in Middlefield, there's some findings that there's been some impacts of the wells. There's no outcome to that. It's been like that for eight years, and there's been no action taken, there's no action proposed, there's no action planned. And so when you have a situation where you have a finding and you have no action, why are you performing the study? And so there's lots of questions in this. We're going to come up with whatever the subject matter experts come up with and bring that to the board to complete the decision process. The thing that everybody needs to understand is this is a longitudinal, long-term study. This is a 20-year study. It is not year-to-year, there's, you know, very large fluctuations or changes in the aquifers. The purpose for a long-term study is to see trends, because there's so many factors that impact, water levels, so on and so forth. And so you do a long-term longitudinal study to see what the trends are, and to analyze what all the various factors are, impacts and influences are relative to the situation. We're going to talk about those things next week. Both of you guys are welcome to attend that meeting. And then out of that, we will jointly come up with, the plan is to jointly come up with set of recommendations to come back to this board with, to say, this is what we're, what we've consented on, this is what we're thinking. Part of which may be that we, the county, do the monitoring or actually have the monitoring equipment and so forth, and provide the data to USGS, which they're amenable to doing. Understand that this study actually is a study that they, that they're using for their purpose. It wasn't designed really around our purpose. They have an agenda, a global objective, USGS, which is very interesting to hear all that. But we want to have something that's geared toward our strategy and our objective and what our outcomes are. So that's what the thought being prior to the discussion we're going to have next week. So I would, I would hesitate putting a stake in the ground and saying, the 10th, we're going to make a decision. Let's see what comes out of the 5th, because there may be some contract changes, we have to approach some of the cities and municipalities like Chardon, Middlefield, Burton. They're doing monitoring today, they're already paying for that monitoring, we can collect that data. There may be a plan that's laid out, this board can accept the plan, and on a go-forward basis then, it says, okay, this is what our objective is, this is what we're going to try to accomplish, and then it all will take some time to come together. So that's the thought.
So as far as the timeline, it's fair to say that on the 10th, we get the, we basically, I guess we would look to have feedback, a presentation from you as far as this meeting and where we're going forward, and on the 17th, we look to take some type of action. I guess I can't, I can't continue to do this of just keep blowing this off and to just keep on putting this, it's not my, it's not my forte. I don't like to do business like this, and I understand the whole research and part of this, but something's got to happen here. So I would say this, on the 10th, we're going to have the final results of what this meeting comes down to. On the 17th, we're going to go ahead and have a plan in place, where I'm going to make a motion to basically re-contract with the USGS for this year, and I'll put a motion out there, and I'll see if I get a second on this, until we can figure out what's going on, because I think that we just need, we need closure on this. And I can't continue to, you know, do the, you know, ring around the Rosie here with this, so.
I personally feel the same.
Yeah, and I think all of us feel we need to bring this to a conclusion. Unfortunately, we had some medical situations. Bob had a problem the last time we tried to get together, and then I had a medical issue for that. So all of us want to bring this to a head. The last thing we'd want to do, from this commissioner's opinion, is make a stupid mistake, because we're trying to rush into something when we don't need to. We want to do the right thing for the county ultimately, and so we don't want to be rushing into something just because we want to make a decision, which is, you know, we want to do the right thing, we're all getting together to have this conversation, and I think it'll be very fruitful. And all the players, I've had conversations with them, and everybody's going to bring their, you know, their take to the table, and I think it'll, we'll probably have a lot of consequence out of it, so.
We're, we've already delayed these folks in this hearing almost 20 minutes, so I think we need to move on.
Thank you.
Move on.
Thank you, Dave.
Move on to 17.
Good morning.
Good morning. We got to, we got to open the hearing, so Debbie, go ahead.
First, we have to wave it, don't we?
Exactly.
Do we want to wave it first or have we wave?
No, well...
Read it.
Okay, read the opening of the hearing.
The Commissioner's Office will hold a public hearing now in regard to the 2016 Community Development Block Grant, CDVG, Small Cities Program. And then...
Look for a motion from, or wave the reading on the armchair.
All right. I move, I move to wave the reading.
Okay.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Riddick?
Aye.
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 Public hearing number one is notifying the public, these are the programs that we can't...
Kelly, can you come over here?
Sure. Public hearing one is to notify the public of any programs that we may apply for in the next formula year, which would be the end of 2016 into 2017. Does not mean we're going to apply for these programs, it's just notifying them that we can't, that they are available to us. Any questions?
Aye. Can you explain the small cities?
Small cities, small cities is basically our CDVG program, which would do our allocation program through our, our ET grants. We're not an entitlement county, so we're a small cities county, and that's the difference. Entitlement county would be a bigger county like Lake County, where they have their other, there's, like, the owner has their own grant applications, and they do their own programs. We're not like that, everything goes countywide, not broken up.
Okay. Right now. Any questions from the audience? Take action, close this one.
You want to do the night?
Yeah, close this public hearing.
Right.
Second.
I move to close the public hearing.
Okay. And then Commissioner Riddick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sprecher?
Aye.
Yeah, Commissioner Clayfield?
Aye.
Read 18.
Yeah.
Wave the...
Commissioner's Office will hold a public hearing at 9:35 a.m. in regard to the 2016 Community Development Grant, Economic Development Program. And I ask that you waive the reading of the public hearing, please.
I move that we waive.
Okay. All right. And then Commissioner Riddick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sprecher?
Aye.
Yeah, Commissioner Clayfield?
Aye.
Read 18.
Yeah.
Wave the...
Commissioner's Office will hold a public hearing at 9:35 a.m. in regard to the 2016 Community Development Grant, Economic Development Program. And I ask that you waive the reading of the public hearing, please.
I move that we waive.
Okay. All right. And then Commissioner Riddick?
Aye.
Aye.
Commissioner Clayfield?
Aye.
Public hearing number two is to notify the county residents that under formula year 2016, which would be 2016, 17, that we would like to apply for an ED grant for EEI Corporation. EEI is buying property and building a new building. This is basically just like our revolving loan fund program, however, we don't have those funds available on our revolving loan fund. So we're asking for additional money from the state following the same guidelines as our revolving loan fund program.
I move to close that hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Riddick?
Aye.
Commissioner Sprecher?
Aye.
Commissioner Clayfield?
Aye.
Thank you.
Are you in here?
I'm just sitting right here.
You're here, you're here for the rest of these, aren't you?
Yeah, yeah.
Get to sit down, huh?
Yeah.
Number 19.
Number nineteen.
Um, number nineteen is, um, we're petitioning the state to create a CRA zone for Burton Township. Um, CRA zone is, it will be for new building or expansion. It will be, uh, a, per company request basis. It doesn't mean that everybody that's in the zone or coming into the zone will get an abatement, or what the abatement will be. It will be per business. But this is just petitioning to the state that we are allowed to create the CRA zone.
And the zone is along eighty-seven, right near the Middlefield line?
Uh, yeah. Should we have this? And let's see that.
So eighty-seven is right here, and then we would, so that would give us-
The box of White Rose?
This is that park, industrial parkway. This is the one that's already in existence, there's a building back here.
Where's that Growers, isn't that Growers?
Yeah, Growers is, I think, on this one.
Yeah.
I think on this one, and I think Lambert's on the last one. That's what I was told, anyway.
That's good.
And it's a good opportunity for new businesses to come in, for businesses to expand business.
I haven't seen it said it, I don't think it's a-
Good thing.
Yeah. Oh, it's a, another development option.
Sure.
Any questions? No? No.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and authorize the President of the Board to execute the Ohio Development Services Agency, Ohio Community Reinvestment Area CRA Program Petition for Area Certification to Create a CRA Zone in Burton Township.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner's hearing.
Aye.
Commissioner Rea?
Thank you, you got one more?
I have two more.
Two more?
Oh, no, one more, yeah, one more. Nope, I have two more.
Two more, you got two more.
All right, the next one is, um, yeah, satisfaction of mortgage for, um, one of our previous chip program, um, clients, now paying an assistance rehab program. This was actually a Habitat House, however, that we had funds involved in. They are paying their mortgage, which is owed to the county, um, so we are recapturing those funds. And that's a good thing, we've had a really good success actually giving our money back from those programs, which we no longer do. So, um, this is good, the money's starting to come back, and hopefully we can regenerate it some more.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and execute a satisfaction of mortgage for Chris Dennis LaCoya and Jacqueline Louise LaCoya for new construction assistance, Community Development Block Grant, CDVG Fund B-C-03, for property located at 16030 Pierce Street, Middlefield, Ohio, as the mortgage in, in the amount of $24,900 has been satisfied.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner's hearing.
Aye.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye. I'm confused with this kind of, there's already signatures on here from-
They gave you wee little, you could have done here.
Yeah, it's listed in there.
Also, we're, we're doubling up on that.
You're, you're signing to satisfy the mortgage this time, that was to execute the mortgage previously. And the last one I have, um, is a subordination agreement with Erie Bank in regards to stuff with the Shep Electric. We did a revolving loan fund for them, and what happens is, the bank's a little bit slower than us, so we file right away to get our mortgage in place, and then the bank will come in a little bit later and say, hey, you have to subordinate. We always knew we were going to be a second on the mortgage, so this is to subordinate to Erie Bank to come ahead of us, so it will be a second.
We did this some months back, right?
Yeah, it's been, in the process, we, we signed this a long time ago, we recorded our my, our mortgage in December, the end of the year last year, so the banks just now finally come in and say, hey, you have to subordinate, so, which we knew was going to happen.
The Office of Community and Economic Development is requesting the board approve and execute this subordination agreement with Erie Bank in regards to the Shep Electric Company Incorporated Revolving Loan Fund, second position loan of $225,000 to allow placement of Erie Bank's first position mortgage.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner's hearing.
Aye.
Thank you, Kelly. Good day. Now, these next five are resolutions that will be presented to the honoraries at the CIC. Did we, did we assist them? Or do I have a manager?
That was the Shep Electric, that's the one that just- Did I read that? Yeah.
How many did I get? There's a couple different ones. The latest one was the backwards one, like, uh, I got two backwards. The latest, oh, okay, so maybe I have extra copies.
Well, I got them all marked, this is the one I'm using.
These are all the resolutions, so would you like to sign while I read them? Do you need to read the motion?
Yes.
Okay.
This is twenty-two through twenty-six.
Yeah, twenty-three, twenty-six, there's five resolutions that will be presented at the CIC.
Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution sixteen dash zero-five-two, honoring Hexpole Compounding LLC, Burton Rubber Processing, on being the Legacy Award winner for 2016 by the Community Improvement Corporation. Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution sixteen dash zero-five-three, honoring Newberry Business Park for being named an outstanding jog county company for 2016 by the Community Improvement Corporation. Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution sixteen dash zero-five-four, honoring Joga Business Magazine for being named an outstanding jog county company for 2016 by the Community Improvement Corporation. The Commissioner's office requesting the board approve and execute Resolution sixteen dash zero-five-five, honoring Troy Chemical Industries for being named an outstanding jog county company for 2016 by the Community Improvement Corporation. The Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution sixteen dash zero-five-six, honoring Leadership Joga for their dedication to educating, encouraging, and developing leadership skills in individuals that leave with positive impact on the community for 2016 by the Community Improvement Corporation. And the last one is the community, the Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute Resolution sixteen dash zero-five-eight, honoring May, is my, my, it's my-
Myocytis.
Myocytis, I knew that.
Yes.
Awareness Month.
I'll make those motions, however, the last one is done. Doesn't have anything to do with the CIC, right?
All right, that's right.
Okay, Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner's hearing.
Aye.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Now, Myocytis Awareness Month, we got a request from a former county employee who apparently has come down with this condition, and he gets a lot of support from, you know, a, a nonprofit that looks after folks that have this malady, and apparently they designated May as the month nationally to try to raise awareness of this. You'll have to Google it, we have some information on it, but the idea is basically, when the commissioners pass a resolution, people are going to look it up and become more aware, and hopefully, you know, they, they may have a chance to do something positive, help those people with that affliction.
It'll be passed only.
You're welcome. It's that big, it's still in action, yes, some of those resolutions. Finally, we have Bonja from Squire Patton Labs. This is the final step on the South Franklin finance.
Morning.
Morning. Thank you, sorry for the wait.
We've learned a lot.
This, um, this resolution is simply to, I think, bolster what happened last week, which is the resolution authorizing the, um, the execution and delivery of the documents, as well as the issuance of the bonds. And so, uh, even the last week, some of the final details have been ironed out, so the final forms for the documents are stacked right there, and, um, we're ready to proceed to, to closing.
Okay. And the revised amount of the, of the debt is six and a half million dollars.
Right.
And the action you take was that it would not exceed seven, they've done the final calculations, and six point five is what they're looking for.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, my, my question last week, when we, when we talked about this one, to ask that question, we authorize you at that time, or we authorize this action at that time, but then, that's when you've got the authorization, you can get the, what the final number's going to be at, because it changes, is that right, or am I off base on that?
No, that's right. I mean, I think over, really over the last month, the numbers have been final, you know, coming towards finalization, and we're now there. Resolution last week authorized the signing and delivery of those documents, they just weren't quite ready, and now they're all.
So I, I wondered if there was the percentage that the bonds are, you know, the-
Interest rate?
Interest rates, and so on, if that's, you can't do that until we take the first action, which guarantees, is that my blue collar way of describing this, or no?
No, that's absolutely right. The, the first resolution, which was about four weeks ago-
Mm-hmm.
-gave them the green light to proceed, in other words, to start negotiating with the lender, to engage the attorneys, to begin to work on the documents and get everything pulled together. So when we came back last week, it was, um, with forms of the documents, the final numbers were blank, and then the case is not open, and, um, that resolution authorized, um, the three of you as commissioners to sign and deliver the documents and issue the bonds. But at that point, you know, we hadn't put a fine point on, on the numbers. For example, expenses, interest allocations, things like that, that you really need to get to the finish line before you can finalize. So, um, that's where we are at this point. Okay, thank you. Thank you.
The Commissioner's office is requesting the board approve and execute the following legal documents regarding the issuance of revenue bonds for South Franklin Circle, Series 2016A and Series 2016B, in an amount not to exceed seven million dollars, and the cancellation and discharge of the 2012 revenue bonds and documents relating to the 2012 revenue bonds, trust indenture, lease, base lease, assignment of basic rent, assignment of rights under base lease and lease, tax certificate and agreement and revenue bonds, Series 2012A and Series 2012B, bond purchase agreement, general certificate, signature and number litigation certificate, IRS form eight zero three eight, closing certificate of issuer, request for authen, authent-
Authentication.
Authentication.
Yes.
Authentication.
And delivery of bonds, lease termination agreement, base lease termination agreement, termination of lease assignments, and termination of trust indenture.
I'll make that motion.
Second.
Commissioner Rea?
Aye.
Commissioner's hearing.
Aye. Aye.
Thank you. You've got to sign all that.
I've got a ton of stuff to sign.
Yeah, a lot to sign.
Yeah, the, um, stack the documentation there, the yellow flags are for commissioners, red flag was for the assistant prosecuting attorney, green flag is for the assistant clerk, and there are four signature pages on the top of each complete document, and we would ask that you sign all four, and then, once that's all done, we'll leave the original plus a signature page for your records. And once the transaction closes on Friday, uh, we'll provide you a complete transcript of all of that, plus, plus more.
So, some of the, uh, two additional pages, so there'll be four pages for each of them.
So we have to sign four pages?
Right on top, right underneath each other.
That's right.
This is Rose Point Capital.
It's for taking, taking, uh, getting this done as quick as you did.
Oh, thank you for your cooperation, yeah, the South Franklin Circle, certainly appreciate it.
Yeah, certain ones only require one signature.
So the titles on here are Rose Point Capital, County Commissioner of South Point. So, are the commissioners supposed to sign in these three places, or are, is the Rose Point Capital guy signing here, the county commissioner signing here? How is this designed?
Um, on, on this document, we only need one commissioner's signature.
Okay.
There are others, for example, this one, where all three-
So on this particular document, one commissioner's?
One commissioner's, yeah.
All right. We've pulled the coin, that's all good. All right, and then these?
These will have three.
Okay.
One last piece to collect, is there, the auditors.
Do you just need one copy of that?
Yeah, I think there were-
I have two signed.
Okay, I think there were two different, different sheets. You want to be one? Yeah, no, that'll be fine.
Okay. You're right.
Yeah.
Okay, so, I'll just need copies of those before I give them to you.
Yeah, that'd be great.
To you, number today.
Yes.
Okay. You just need, um, do you, do you need any copies of this one?
No, I can just take those two originals and they'll be fine.
And that's all you need?
Yeah. Yeah.
I'd rather have a cheat sheet than be putting from. We're done with- Yeah, you have, you guys, yeah, you guys can sit back down, I think they're just going to go through, you know, a little housekeeping here, we'll be done here very shortly, so we'll be right here- You guys stand up there and watch.
Yeah.
You're comfortable.
Thank you.
If you want to, when we're done with this, maybe just go over it, and just give it a once-over, if there was anything that you, you know, caught that we didn't do, and-
Sure.
Doesn't make sense, thank you.
Skip, I could read the announcements of meetings while you guys are signing, if you want, uh, what you want to do.
Well, there's, you can do that, there's one item that I want to bring up that was sent to me from the lack of anything that I've mentioned to our board members.
I'll go through these while you guys are signing. Announcements, uh, there's a weekly report filed by the county dog ward, and all dogs seized and found that the Deanville destroyed for the week ending April thirteenth, 2016, as required by O R C nine five five two two two. Received a monthly report filed by the John County Sheriff's Office, and an account of expenses for inmate meals for months ending March 2016. Received minutes from the John County Board of Developmental Disabilities from February seventeenth, 2006. Upcoming meetings, uh, we've already handed the first one listed for the public hearings that were coming- Uh, upcoming meetings, uh, we've already handled the first one listed for the public hearings that were coming today. Commissioners' evening session is scheduled for six thirty this Thursday, the twenty-eighth, is canceled because some of the commissioners will be going to the CIC forty-sixth Annual Salute the Business in Industry at five thirty PM at Signal Party Center. April twenty-eighth is Casa Day, Ohio, uh, the four thirty PM, the four seventy, four seventy Center Street, Building five C in Chardon. Some commissioners will be going to an opiate conference in Columbus, uh, from Sunday, May first, to Tuesday, the third. Commissioner's session scheduled for nine AM on the third, therefore has been canceled. There's a Casa appreciation evening at six thirty PM on the fifth at Welshford Inn. Commissioners will hold regular session at nine AM on the tenth. Planning commission is scheduled for seven PM on the tenth. On Friday, the thirteenth, there's a Milwaukee financing audit, um, maybe thirty, government's at ten thirty. On Monday, the sixteenth, the main, there's a family first meeting at two, two PM, GFS. And on Tuesday, uh, May seventeenth, the commissioners will hold regular session at nine AM.
Sorry, and this, here on the second copy there, I see that it'd be on this page, and there's another page here that's not actually marked. So we just had the four cover pages, and then there's another page.
Oh, that's just the second page, it's, it's, don't worry.
So don't worry about this one, but-
Okay.
Right.
Four on top.
Okay, and these are completed, if you wanted to give those a once-over.
Also, you say all, you just need one signed on these, or all three?
Oh.
Or two?
Yeah, I think there's an extra page here, we just need one on the third page.
Okay.
Yeah.
Just need one.
And did you have the one copy file, the single signature?
Do I have one?
The one that Skip signed? That one there?
Do you want to look at them?
No, just in case there's something else I might have missed something.
There's only three on this one. Four, okay.
Hands are bleeding, I tell ya.
Is it probably one, eight or three, four? What, where is this one, the text one?
Uh, it's just require all the commissioners to sign it.
Just one. So, on every page.
Um, please. Just one signature. No, wait, I'm sorry.
Okay, so how many pages is one?
Two.
Three. So there's four pages, same as the other.
Can you just take a single signature on that one?
Right.
Sounds like a tax form, I don't know about signing taxes.
It's an information return, so.
So they say, so, going to the IRS, nothing can go wrong.
Really, what can go wrong? You guys are competing with the Department of Development for most signatures on that.
We get our best that he is from the developers. Same thing on this one, could we leave the back page alone?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
Oh. Um, what I could do is just, you know, stretch that out a little bit.
Okay.
So the stickies are on the top page here, I don't know if this applies to same as IRS, then we do apply. So we can move that one. I don't know how to paper down, Ryan.
We're getting close. Five ready to run out of ink, or?
Yeah, I already, I cooled down one pan.
I think there's, they're forgetting how to sign. Are you making stuff up as we go here, and keep throwing stuff in that thing yet, though? I'll cover you. Boy, you're definitely gonna stop. Can you just stop copying here? This is feedback from the speaker system. Yeah, it just litters on its own.
This is probably just turn lost.
Yeah, yeah, there's probably, yeah. Probably a switch there, just turn on. So if you guys can listen while I'm, while you're signing, um, I just got a, a email from Grace Galucci from Norwacka. At the last, this has to do with the rural council that did for me. At the last meeting, which I did not attend, Linda attended for me, um, she recorded the meeting for me, so I listened to it. There was a lot of confusion over something called the at-large seats, because there was a lot of at-large seats. They wanted, uh, there was some discussion about doing the weight of those at-large seats, the decision was not to. So there's gonna be four at-large seats. The way Grace explained to me that these work is, every county gets to put in recommendations, but they're at-large, not representing a given county. So we have four seats we're allowed to re- to make recommendations for, in categories of outdoor recreation, real estate, rural transportation, and community services. So, um, you might want to give that some thought. I'll forward this letter to you, so you have that as a reference. I'll be making some recommendations relative to those slots, we take the forward those into them. They'll go into the mail you, that Norwacka, and everybody else that throws anything that I had there. And, uh, we'll see what the decision process is, but I wanted to give you that heads-up, so that you were, um, aware that that's coming and what that was all about, so. Any questions? Mr. Brockles?
Hi, Ed Brockles from Troy Township. I missed the last couple of meetings, I had a question about, um, one, and then another question about something that came up today, if I could. One is, what happened with the McDonald Farm request for, uh, an agricultural, uh, conservation?
That was not approved.
And, um, you seem to have some questions for the Jaga Job and Family Services today, that you wanted to talk to them about becoming the lead agency, but you were going to have a discussion in private with them. Is there something there that we ought to be aware of, that you wanted to discuss with them, or do you want to hold that?
I, I have questions on that program from the state of Ohio, mandating that we look at kids who are sixteen years old still living at home as indigent. I, I, that doesn't add up to me. So I'm gonna ask them questions about the program, so.
In terms of beyond that, I mean, I can see a sixteen-year-old living with a family in poverty that they might need special assistance. Did you have something beyond that?
If the family's in poverty, then there should be a program to take care of the family, a sixteen-year-old home. Again, this is just questions that I, that pop into my head when I listen to these goofy programs coming to the state sometimes. How would you separate a sixteen-year-old and a family from poverty, from the fit, the family who's in poverty? So, I don't know anything about the program, I'm gonna ask them questions about it, because I, I want to be informed about it. But those are the questions that I have, so.
I see, all right. And just in passing, anytime you make a comment, as you did, about the USGS is having an international agenda, it gives me cold chills for your little paranoia.
I didn't say anything about an international-
Yeah, you actually did say-
No, I did not.
Said global, uh, um-
I, I said that they had a-
Global agenda.
They have, uh, they have their own objectives, the USGS is a federal organization, they have their own objectives, separate and aside from any objective that Jaga County has. They do, um, they blend and meld information in with a host of other data to do their analysis. And as I talked to Martha Jaguki, just as, to extend the, you know, information, there's a lot of misinformation about this floating around out there. That's, they're in this for the science. USGS is in this for science, not to accomplish some objective of protecting water at Jaga County. They're in it for the science. Martha told me this. Now, the study that they did, they've, they've done a long-term, twenty-year study. The study accomplished what it was intended to accomplish, and that is to understand the impacts of development on the aquifers over a twenty-year period. They have some findings now, they can comment on that. We paid for and can use that data. If we didn't do that study going forward, we still have that data and that understanding of our aquifers that would, um, suffice. We don't need to, there is an argument to be made, it says, okay, we've, we've got the study, we understand what it is, and we have all the decision criteria we need in order for townships and the county planning organization to make some decision. So the question gets to be, what do we want to do going forward, if that's true? And that's part of the conversation. Now, I've had this conversation with all the subject matter experts. Every one of them is in agreement that we ought to have this meeting, we ought to have this conversation, and not jump to the agreement that we had last year, which in, in fact, doesn't, doesn't exist today. That agreement would have to be adapted to our current situation, and it's a data collection thing. The data that we collect this year is, in the context of a twenty-year study, is somewhat mediumist, because it is a trend analysis. And, um, so, with that said, um, there's a lot of good questions that we've gotten into, and I think if you talk to Dave Dietrich across the, the aisle over here, he would tell you we're asking some really good questions. And we're gonna have a fruitful conversation about how do we really, what do we really need to accomplish for Jaga County? I'm interested in Jaga County, I want to make sure Jaga County, because I'm on a well, and everybody else is on a well, um, is accomplishing the, the best interest of the people in Jaga County on a long-term basis. So on a go-forward basis, what is the right thing to do? Martha actually suggested to USGS that we approach a university to have them do an actual well study. So we have a whole host of types of wells through Jaga County, we don't understand that. Some are two hundred feet deep, some are forty feet deep, some are a thousand feet deep, some are eight inches, some of them are four inches, some of them. So we don't understand the nature of that and what the impacts to our aquifers are. Maybe we ought to look at that. I, I think that's maybe a good idea. So that's part of what's come up through this dialogue. We've had a very healthy conversation, which is, um, I think important. Every so often, you need to kind of step back, look at what you're doing, and just not out of reflex, make decisions, suspend tax data for pure dollars, when in fact, it may not be accomplishing what you want to accomplish. So does that help?
I, I just think you're a trickle of the transcript, because you did make a comment about the local agenda.
Yeah, I don't think so, but I'll, I'll look at it. Any other questions? If not, I have a motion to adjourn. Did we have a motion?